Nineteen nine, Shepard. Be with us. We're following him. Nineteen nine, Shepard. Be with us. We're following him. Oh, listen, people, I'm gonna be very laid back today, almost by design. One, because it's a Friday and it's been a busy, busy week. We'll talk about that week in just a few minutes and what the, maybe the week of the life of a mayor. I'll just run down the stops, the meetings, and then just kind of the life of, of putting yourself out there like this. I'll, I'll share it with you here just a little bit. On one day, it's illegal to pay somebody to vote. But on the next day, being Election Day, it's legal to pay somebody to canvass. Even though they don't canvass, even though they don't go to a house, they hop on a bus, they go down, they vote, they come back, and they cash a seventy-five-dollar check. So the day before, it's illegal, the next day, completely legal, or at least enough gray area.
I think a lot of what that is is they pay somebody seventy-five dollars to go find five friends to take to the poll. Now, here's seventy-nine dollars. I want you to go over there and then-
As long as you bring five friends that get a seventy-five-dollar check as well, Jack, you're exactly right. So, so gray that they don't even go after it to prosecute, not this ethics guy I just talked about. I handed over the sixty-five, seventy-five-dollar checks, banned out on the table, cashed at the same liquor store, deposited at the same place. I just, I don't know what else to say.
The mayor had a, a small surgical procedure and Derek is at home recuperating, so I will be chairing the meeting tonight. But I'd like to call this meeting to order, the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one meeting of Mayor and Council. If I could call up Pastor Mike Wells with New Covenant Church to lead us in prayer, and then if everyone will stand, we'll do the pledge of allegiance thereafter.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Lord Jesus, I thank you for each round of these public servants. Father, I pray that you would make us all to know your will. I pray you strengthen them to lead in the midst of these chaotic, yet opportune times. I pray, Father, you unify our hearts for the good of this city and for the people created to bear your image, and that all the world would know that from one blood you've created all mankind. Lord, I pray that you would let the spirit of wisdom and truth reign in this place, and that you would move strong on their behalf. I pray, Lord Jesus, that any weapon formed will not prosper, and that your peace will reign in this place, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
For the religions. For the religions of the United States of America. And to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Wells. Next item on the agenda is number two, awards and presentations. And we will now hear a presentation by the Ethics Complaint Board. And I ask those members to come forward. Mr. Jefferson, he was the chair.
My two counterparts, they wanted to get up here so quickly that they called me back, and then the chief and I said, "We're not going up there right now." Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Jefferson. My address is thirteen forty-four Wyman Ridge Circle, here in Valdosta. You have a letter in your possession, I hope all of you have received it, from us, the board of ethics, Attorney Shelton, Attorney Dunson, and myself. Excuse me, I got allergies real bad, so bear with me. Notifying you of our decision to dismiss the ethics complaint against Mayor Matheson on about, uh, about the fifteenth of February this year by a group identifying themselves as the Coalition of Community Organizations. What I'm gonna do, since you have the letter, you've had a chance to read it, I'm gonna just briefly recap it. The complaint, the complaint indicated that the mayor of Valdosta repeatedly violated a number of core ethical requirements, articulated in the City of Valdosta Code of Ethics ordinance. The ordinance number is twenty-fourteen dash thirteen. To address that complaint, you all established a board of ethics. This body then appointed Attorney Dunson and myself, and then we later selected Attorney Shelton, which you confirmed on twenty-five March. We had two hearings. The first hearing was just for planning and organizing. The settlement set on April fourteenth was to determine if the complaint should be dismissed or not dismissed at that point. At the April fourteenth hearing, we, the ethics board, determined that the complaint should be dismissed. And our rationale was that it failed the state facts sufficient to invoke the disciplinary jurisdiction of the mayor and council. Now, I don't know if you have a copy of the ethics code, Vegas with you, but that's, you can see Section six, item eight, and it also states the same in Section seven, item C of the ethics ordinance. And that is in that letter that we sent you. The ordinance requires us to submit in writing to the complainant and to mayor and council our decision, which we did, and you, again, you have a copy of that. That ends the task in reference to our duties as far as this ethics complaint is concerned. We will address any questions or concerns that you have.
Members of the council have any questions to ask? Councilman Howard?
I wanna ask Attorney Tanner and Mark. With the findings of this board, are we required to accept those or, or that decision? Just permit, that's what I'm asking you.
I don't think the ordinance requires you to accept them, but it appears that the case has now been dismissed, so I don't think there's any action for the council to take at this point.
Okay, so now, are we allowed to ask the panel question?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys want to run?
Yes. Mr. Jefferson, I, I knew a good chair of the panel, and I heard, I listened to, I listened to each, each one. And my question to Judge Dunson, do you think, I know, I know y'all, we got to the point where we said, "We want the mayor to be able to earn a living." We want him to be able to work on a radio station there, and then, but when they were talking about blurring the lines between being the mayor and the radio, the radio host. Are we at the point now where we can say, "You're able to be a radio host but not on a radio station, referenced as the mayor of Valdosta, or in my role as the mayor of Valdosta?" Are we at that point now, is that, is that the conclusion that you guys came up with? Or you saying that he's able to say what he wants to say regardless? That's, that's my question, because we wanna find out if he's gonna be the mayor of Valdosta or you're gonna be Scott James, the radio show host. That's, that's what we're trying to find out, because it's a, you're putting the city and the council in the bad spot because there's so much other stuff that we like to be caught on that. But every time we get to that point, it's, what are the people saying? What, what's going on with the mayor? We don't wanna do anything, so we wanna find out from you guys. What do you guys suggest that you do?
Well, the ethics board was charged with making the decision if that written complaint violated the ordinance. We found that it did not invoke the jurisdiction of this law, and therefore we dismissed it on the grounds of safety. I think you're at the point, you can, you can address questions and comments as you wish, the council or you do?
If, if I could, Councilman, the, I think as far as the ethics ordinance is concerned, their duties, their charges, they have completed that, and they are now done. I think to answer your question, that is, that is something that could be considered by council. If you wanted to carry it forward with the council in some form, that, it wouldn't be done through the ethics panel.
I, I understand, but we're at the point now where we're talking about making changes to the ordinance, so I would like the panel to give us a suggestion, so when we can, when we change this, the ordinance, we can go ahead and include their input because we wanna make sure we doing this right. We don't wanna go through this again. So that's why I'm asking, if they had a suggestion, if they had any suggestion that would help us.
Okay.
That's a great question, Councilman Howard. I've already talked with Mr. Jefferson, asked what began the, the changes to be ordered, some look at it, to bridge some of the gaps, and look at some of these things. I've asked him, asked as the committee chair, if he'll be part of that discussion, and after what they found, as they begin to look at this process. So that's been working on, as we speak.
Mr. Robert, may I ask a question to you, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
My question is to the ethics board. Why do we announce that it was public, and then when the people get here, they are not allowed to speak? Can we go into a negative board meeting, when we advertise it in a paper open to the public?
A public meeting, that's correct. It's advertised as a public meeting. I'm gonna let Attorney Tanner, if he can give you that, give her a chance, a little bit louder than I can, on that topic.
Because the citizens are beating us down with heels, and we are calling it another one.
Yes, it was a public meeting, it was publicly advertised, but a public meeting obviously differs from a public hearing. The, the terms of the ordinance gave the board of ethics the power to determine how the process would take place. And I think, as Mr. Jefferson said, and as he stated during the actual meetings of the ethics board itself, they, the first meeting was for scheduling purposes, and the second meeting was to determine just that succinct question between them, whether or not it would be dismissed on those four grounds, and they chose one of the four grounds. But meetings such as this are not always open for public comment. We allow public comment as provided in our statutes or our ordinances, but this is what we call a limited public forum. This is not a open public forum. So what I mean by that, and I wouldn't suggest it, but you have the power to eliminate public comment. The citizens be heard. You have never done that, and I wouldn't suggest you do that. But this is a limited public forum, just like that. That was a limited public forum. So they chose not to take comment from the public at that time, and that was within their powers to do that.
Sir, is that the state denied ordinance?
That, that they changed the process?
No, that is a limited, is that?
That is not so in our board. That, that is the type of and we've lit, this case, this is still litigated with Valdosta in two thousand eight, of the type of public forum we're, we're in. And there's people, and this is familiar litigation, but that's traditionally a council meeting or a commission meeting, it's a limited public forum. So that's the reason why you can say you get five minutes to speak or three minutes to speak as compared to you getting unlimited time to speak. So that's the, that's the law.
Okay, I have a question. So is that something that we are able to change in the ordinance, or that's just gonna be?
Yeah, you can structure, if, a future board of ethics, you can structure how the process, you can take away some of the latitude they may have, and I say they as the future board of ethics. You certainly probably would get a little latitude, you say you gotta have, you know, you gotta do this, do this, and that, and something like that, so you can structure it in the ordinance.
Okay.
So Attorney Tanner, with us changing, changing the guidelines, we can include the citizens to be a part of the board of ethics now, instead of all being judges and etcetera?
Yeah, you can, you can determine the, the qualifications. The GMA puts out a model ethics ordinance, and there's four alternative alternatives in that model ethics ordinance. One of ours is one of the four. If you look at the GMA website, they further advertise the two cities to look at, Marietta and the other, I believe, is either Conyers or Covington or one of them. Marietta's just like, they have a, they, they, the members are, have the same qualifications, but they sit on board for two years. That's the only difference, not them, one in every ethics, they sit on board for two years.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I have a question, my hand come back. Attorney, possibly tomorrow. At this point, with the decision that the panel has made, can the council vote, even vote, and make any suggestion or motion as for the final decision, what they can, a final decision? On their, on, finally?
If you follow the ethics ordinance, it's, the ethics ordinance would suggest that it's a, it's been dismissed in writing. And the reason why it says, it says that, it says a couple places, they've dismissed in writing. And then it says, if the complainant or the, the subject of the complaint, this guy's the mayor, had a problem with the findings of the board of ethics, it doesn't say they can appeal to the city council. It says essentially they can appeal to the Spirit for a mountain county. So that's, that's why I remember that opinion. They do, they can seek relief in the courts from the decision they do not agree with, so.
But I thought the council makes like a final decision on whatever panel decides.
If, if they came to you with findings, if they got past this stage, and they came to you with findings of the fact and how they concluded, there's two penalties, one of which is a request for a resignation, and the other, I believe, is a public reprimand or censure. So, but it doesn't appear that it's gonna make it to you because they've dismissed it.
But is my understanding, if the complaint is a party against the council or the city council members or the mayor, that the council, or the mayor, the council, and you can do a public, what they call a reprimand or censorship or something like that, or kind of a vote of no confidence or something like that?
A good question. If you follow the ethics ordinance, it would suggest that you would not have that right. Now, does council have a right in, outside of the ethics ordinance? Well, that's, you, you have a right to put something on the agenda and address something, because that's, I mean, we've heard a lot about free speech, and that is free speech as well, so.
Well, the reason I say that is because of the fact, I have a letter where not this mayor, but the previous mayor, in the mayor's office, in his duties, did present saying that they, that the council could do that to a council member or a mayor, if they did something that the, that the, that the council or citizens, if they did something that the council or the mayor felt was inappropriate, that they could bring a letter of no confidence, or they could censor them, or something like that? Is that not true?
I think that could be a conflict, but I, I've never seen that. The only, the only similar circumstances I recall was a couple of years ago, I think he made a, passed a resolution against the hospital authority, if I recall, and it was a vote of no confidence. So I think you're, you're, you're correct in a way that if it's not pertaining to the ethics ordinance itself, I mean, it's just in general, that I feel like a line was crossed, and we don't wanna state our opinion on it, then that, that can be done.
Because I was wondering if it would be appropriate if I could make a motion to a certain, I guess, make a motion to, uh, I guess, to apply a vote of no confidence in this situation?
I think you possibly can bring that up, put it on the agenda. This is, I don't know if you can do it tonight, because it had to be tied to the, the current recommendation. I would suggest that this, it couldn't be tied to the current findings.
Then it'd have to be an emergency to amend the agenda.
Yeah. You have to amend the agenda to make a vote, or a vote?
To put a vote, voting action item on the agenda tonight.
I think you could, you could put it on the next agenda, concern.
Okay, well, you might say that is, then I, I don't know about what the frank definitions are about this, when I can tell you for a fact, I was told, as a councilwoman, that I could not go on radio and say anything until I was coached, because I did not want to. I was told, "You do not wanna mess up the integrity of the city or make a city look by the mayor, the previous mayor, the previous city manager, and the previous public relation person." Now, I'm just told that, and that's why I thought if that is appropriate for the councilperson, it should be appropriate for the mayor as well. And I find it now that, I guess, the way people leave the ordinance, that's not true. And I wanna just know, why is it not true now that it was true before? And that's what I'm just looking at. I see a conflict here. And I, I'm just, to be honest, I've seen so many things done, and so what's right for one is not right for another. And that is one reason I'm trying to get this straight, so we can get past, because I know we all wanna make some changes to the ordinance, and I hope by doing this, we could clear up a lot of problems going on there. Because that, to me, is clearly, it was in Section three, I think, where, where it was saying that I think it said the mayor, who had, where he could see what he wants to say on radio. But I'm just wondering, because I think the way you're doing things, or where we can add here to some people's privileges up here, and the council, and the other ones not, that's why I said, I do not think that was a good decision that was made. It was the criminals, and they did the best they could, and I understand that. But the cost of some of the things that have been happening here, and I want our city to have, really have a good integrity and not have any sort of negative spots on it, is what I'm hoping.
If I could, I think that, that what you might be referring to in communications, in reference to previous mayor's yell, is that there are three individuals with the city that are designated as the official spokespersons for the city, and that's the public information officer, the city manager, and the mayor. I'm pretty sure that's what you're referencing. But even setting that aside, councilwoman, as the city attorney stated, if you wish to bring back another council member, or several councilmen, wishes to bring back and actually light up on a future agenda for one of our meetings, that's certainly your prerogative. And you have the ability to do that.
Yeah, this is the way I look at it, and there probably is some language that I don't refresh myself. I know the policies and procedures that I'm aware of, mayor and council, and the city manager sits on behalf of the city. I won't say the position, but if the city doesn't speak unless council votes on it, that's my position. There are no official, you know, when a council member speaks, he's speaking, or he should speak with that particular councilperson. It's like, you know, you collectively act, and that's the only voice of the city, is when you collectively act, it may be a split decision, maybe unanimous decision. But that's the official policy of the city of Valdosta legally. So that's kinda how I look at it. I haven't looked at what the mayors in some cities, the mayor, this is official spokesperson. I just own the policies and procedures, the city manager is, but, but that's kinda how I look at it.
Well, I think when you address yourself, that has the, has the councilwoman for the city of Valdosta, that enclose that that means you're speaking in general like that, right? If I say, "As the councilwoman Samuel Tulli for the city of Valdosta," I just don't like, I don't like the word. I like anything like that. Can I just speak with that? Say I'm speaking officially?
No. It's my position here, not, because, I mean, what can, what can, we're having, we're having a discussion, this is good, I think. What can councilwoman Tulli buy herself to, can she pass an ordinance or not? Can she see if something gets done or not? She is one of a collective body of citizens that have to act. So it probably would give that impression that you're official, but, you know, to the public, you know, when you say, "I'm a councilwoman, I'm a councilwoman, this is how I feel," but that's how you feel, that's not how the city. The city has to play their vote, and, you know, maybe it'd be wise to say, while I am the councilwoman or while I'm the mayor, you know, I'm just speaking as my, oh, this is my own opinion. Something like that could be sad, and maybe, you know, extinguish the point, too, but that's how I look at it.
So I have one other question for you. So do you recommend, again, you're, you're a little asking, do you recommend that we don't take any action until we amend the ordinance? Or are you saying we don't take any, try to take any action until the next meeting? Or whenever they suggest putting this on the next agenda as an action item?
Yeah, now, let me ask, are you talking about whether or not the public censure or public?
Right, I'm saying what councilwoman Tulli said, but I'm asking, I know you're saying because of ethics board, this missed. Or you're saying, since they dismissed it, you, it would be your suggestion that we don't take any action? Because I know you said we can't take any action tonight, because we would need to put it on the next, go on the agenda.
Well, I, I-
What, what reason why I'm asking is, like I said, if, if you're saying because of the way the ordinance is written now, since it was dismissed, we should not move on. But so, if we, after we change the agenda and we go through the process, it would be totally different. But as far as right now, you think we should go by the rules that we have in place now? Is that your suggestion?
Yeah, that would be mine, I think that would be required as to the ethics ordinance. But what I'm saying is, if there's a future resolution brought up, like councilwoman Tulli suggested, it would be untethered, would not be tied to the ethics ordinance.
Right.
It would just be your disclosure as a, as a right of counsel to say, "We're displeased with this language, is not pursuant to the ethics ordinance or not." I mean, I think at this point, that complaint, the complaint itself, not the feelings about it, the complaint itself is, is a-
So, does that answer your question? Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I have one, yes, I know you said, I, when we took our oath, from my understanding, when I first became a councilman, and I was, my previous city manager, he said, "We hold a title twenty-four hours a day as being a city representative." You have to carry yourself in a manner of always representing this city, in my program.
You should. You should.
We should, but if we don't, like what, instance, I'm not against anyone, I'm just asking this question. That would happen on the radio, and what, so we can wear separate hats, but we should not wear such hats as being, and when we took that oath.
Well, it, uh-
It's just like, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go screedy on you now. Okay, let's say for instance, when I get married, and I said I do to my husband, I can't go to the bar and walk in the door and say, "I'm single," because I took an oath of saying I do. Isn't that the same thing, we took the oath, similar, the oath of saying we represent the city?
I mean, I, I agree with you, that when you take that oath and you, you put on the cloak of council member or any electric official, you need to, you need to operate the matter, command the worthy of that position. Now-
Now, I know, Mr. Robert, is it representative, because we put in that position. We don't never pose an oath of stepping in. I, I know that's, I know that's how God is.
And what, and there's a, and there's a difference, however, of what you, what you should do, how you should carry yourself, and then what is legally- you, what you should do, how you should, uh, carry yourself, and then what is legally required. And there is, there is obviously, uh, freedom of speech. And, and one of the reasons, I think, just, that one of the board members raised was that he felt was important, freedom of speech. Um, freedom of speech works both ways. Uh, that's why, if you want to bring a resolution, it has freedom of speech too. So, uh, could you, and there's probably a, a different section for violating, or your violation of your oath pursuant to the city charter. I don't know if, uh, anything to do with political speech should rise to that level. Uh, but, you know, that may be a little different, but I was trying to say.
Okay, on the legal part of this, how do we explain this to the citizens, that they will accept what the ethics board brought back to us? You know, I mean, I know the guidelines, but we got to explain to them a way that they would respect the councilmans from now on, because the, because the way it is now, we've lost respect of the citizens. We've lost total respect for the citizens. How do we get that back? And your legal advice to us, how do we get that back?
Well, I think you, you, you try to be transparent as possible, you try to, try to educate them as much as you can, that there's not always a legal remedy to certain things. There may be a political remedy to certain activities, certain speech. And a lot of problems that cure, uh, political speech that you don't like is the battle box. Uh, and that's probably what would happen, uh, if, you know, if there was, if there was a provision in ethics ordinance that tried to, tried to remove the mayor, then that run into serious consequences for what has took place, you know, uh, today that I'm aware of.
I'm not talking about the mayor, I'm talking about how can the councilmans get their respect back. I want a legal explanation from you, because we have some citizens out here, and we want this to go out in a positive way, not in a negative way, because Attorney Tanner, I myself, I have a deep down in my, in my district, real bad behind this. And I'm asking you just for help in the legal way, so that I can walk still in dignity as I serve my citizens.
Uh, that's a, that's a hard question to answer from a legal perspective, but I will tell you what, the board of ethics, okay, they have four options. They either determine that the complaint in and of itself was unjust, okay, they did not find it was unjust, they could have found it was frivolous, they did not find it was frivolous, they could have found it was patting unfounded, they did not find that. Instead, they found it failed to state facts sufficient to vote the jurisdiction of mayor and council. It was a distinction. Uh, that distinction means we accept what you say is true, it just, what you say is true doesn't violate this particular ordinance. And, and we have to look at that ordinance four quarters, and we have to see if it violates. So I think that's an important distinction, that they did not find it unjust or frivolous or founded, they found it that way. Now, uh, I don't know if there was, if there is a legal way to, to, uh, to remedy the situation you're, you're facing, uh, uh, it's a difficult, because it's a, it's a largely dependent on a political, uh, remedy. So that's, that's probably not, that's, that's our idea, and I don't do my best.
Thank you.
Well, uh, I will say that, you know, like controversial land use cases, uh, you're always gonna have half the, or you have to with the decision that's made, and half of them, it's not gonna be acted with the decision that's made, but it's still the decision. And actually, attorneys articulate, um, the ethics parameters, know their due diligence and done their duty in what we've asked of them based on the, the outline of the ordinance, and we thank you for your service.
I just want to say to Attorney Tan, Tanner, thank you, sir, for answering my questions, so that the public can hear it. I don't have no hard feelings, I just wanted your legal advice on, on this.
Thank you, thank you for that.
We got our buddies right over here tonight.
I believe.
All right, let's move it along.
People, I'm gonna be very late back today, almost by design. One, because it's a Friday, and it's been a busy, busy week. We'll talk about that week, I mean, just a few minutes, and what the, maybe, maybe the week of the life of a mayor. I'll just run down the stops, the meetings, and, and then just kind of the life of, of putting yourself out there like this. I'll, I'll share it with you here just a little bit. On one day, it's illegal to pay somebody to vote, but on the next day, being election day, it's legal to pay somebody to canvass, even though they don't canvass, even though they don't go to a house, they hop on a bus, they go down, they vote, they come back, and they cash a seventy-five dollar check. So the day before, it's illegal, the next day, completely legal, or at least enough gray area. I think a lot of what that is, is they pay somebody seventy-five dollars to go find five friends to pay for the poll. Hey, here's seventy-nine dollars, I want you to go over there. As long as you bring five friends that get a seventy-five dollar check as well, Jack, you're exactly right. So, so gray, that they don't even go after it to prosecute, not this ethics guy I just talked about. I handed over the sixty-five seventy-five dollar checks, banned out on the table, cashed at the same, same liquor store, deposited at the same, I don't, I don't know what else to say.
Good evening. I am Pastor Bruce Francis, the serving leader of the St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church located in the city of Valdosta, Georgia. I stand before you, I come before you tonight to make this statement in regards to the ethics complaint, and to share with you my concerns as it relates to the ethics complaint that was filed against Mayor Scott James Matheson of Valdosta, Georgia, by several organizations in our community. These organizations are the NAACP, the Mary Turner Project, the Valdosta Lowns County Community Action, and the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta. After meeting on April first, twenty-twenty-one of the Ethics Committee, it appears that the entire Code of Ethics is not being used in consideration to determine if the mayor has violated these ethical codes. The Ethics Committee, who will be reviewing the complaint, was only given the third section of Code of Ethics that deal with the criminal part of this code. Our complaint has never been a criminal complaint, we have never accused the mayor of any criminal offense. Our charges are based upon the first section of the Code of Ethics, which states, whereas the governing body deems it essential to the proper operation of democratic government, that the public officials be and give the appearance of being independent, impartial, and responsible to the people, that governmental decisions and policies be made in the proper channels of the government structure, and that public office not be used for personal gain. And whereas the members of the governing authority feel that all elected officials of the city of Valdosta should conduct themselves so as to not create any question or concern as to appropriateness, legality, or sincerity of any actions or conduct as a member of the governing authority, and whereas such measures are necessary to provide the public with confidence in the integrity of its government. Therefore, based upon the City of Valdosta Code of Ethics from Section One, the Mayor of Valdosta, Mr. Matheson, has violated its own Code of Ethics. As a concerned clergy member, we ask that all city officials be held accountable by the same Code of Ethics that have been used in times past, when other city of employees were suspended for a violation of the moral Code of Ethics. The question is not, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a criminal perspective, but rather, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a moral and civil perspective? The Concerned Clergies of Valdosta ask that the Ethics Committee do not review our complaint from a criminal perspective, because that's not it, what it is. You must consider the whole Code of Ethics. If the whole Code of Ethics is not used in this complaint, it sends a message that certain parts of the Valdosta Code of Ethics only applies to whomever, whenever it is deemed necessary and needed to suit their need. A- as I close, the late Nelson Mandela once said, great leaders are not merely effective, they are ethical. Moral principles guide their purposes and practices. People follow them because they believe in them. Great lea- leaders engender trust in their integrity, their competence, and their intentions. With this in mind, Mayor Matheson, consider the statements that you have made, uh, over your radio broadcast that were unfair, that were unsupported by any real evidence, and literally harmful to you, as you should in your office as mayor of the city of Valdosta, be seeking ways to build unity in this city and county, instead of sowing seeds of dissent. And with this in mind, I say to those who have been handpicked by a contingency that did not include input or opportunity to, to participate in the Ethics Committee's election process, that you, the members of this committee, uh, consider your responsi- responsibility, and that is to be fair, to be impartial, and to consider all of the evidence, and thus render the right decision. We, the members of the Concerned Clergy of Valdosta, the Mary Turner Project, the NAACP, and the Lowns Valdosta Community Action Group, and the entire city of Valdosta, which you represent, are looking for you, Mr. Mayor, and for you, the Ethics Committee, on this Wednesday, to do the right thing. Again, I am Bruce Francis, the serving leader of St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church in the city of Valdosta. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Um, yeah, well, it was illegal yesterday, but today's election day, so it's illegal, it's called campuses. And they couldn't pay. They brought five friends, they hopped on a bus.
It's like, um, it's like ballot harvesting, um, o- on the right, we say, well, that can't be fair, because it's, it's, you don't know where those ballots came from, but on the left, it's like, oh, well, what's wrong with it? I- i- as long as people get the vote, we need to get these votes in. Hey, getting these votes in is, is important. And I'm like, oh, no, it's not.
And if you oppose it, Jack, you're suppressing it.
I don't care, I, I am suppressing those votes. Those are not, I, I do, I am blatantly coming out right now, saying, I think we should suppress the vote. I think suppressing the vote needs to be done, because a lot of people who aren't allowed to vote are voting because we're making it too easy.
Jack has long thought that you should have to test the, the front door, which is.
I think voting should be hard. I don't think it should be this easy. And I, I don't care if you think anything negative about me, because I'm an old man, and I'm gonna die in, in the near future. So it, it doesn't matter what you think of me.
Good evening, beloved. My name is Pastor J.P. Robinson. I'm the senior pastor of the Good Hope Christian Church in the city of Valdosta, Georgia. I am also a member of the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta, Georgia, and I come to you tonight to share my concerns as it relates to the ethics complaint that was filed against Mayor Scott James Matheson of Valdosta by several organizations in our community, which include the NAACP, the Mary Turner Organization, the Valdosta Lowns County Community Action Group, and the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta. After the meeting on April the first, twenty-twenty-one of the Ethics Committee, it appears that the entire Code of Ethics is not being used in consideration to determine if the mayor has violated the ethics code. The Ethics Committee, who will be reviewing the complaint, was only given the third section of the Code of Ethics that deals with the criminal part of the Code of Ethics. Our complaint has never been a criminal complaint. We have never accused the mayor of any criminal offense. Our charges are based upon the first section of the Code of Ethics, which states, whereas the governing authority deems it essential to the proper operation of democratic government, that the public officials be and give the appearance of being independent, impartial, and responsible to the people, that governmental decisions and policies be made in the proper channels of the governmental structure, and that the public office not be used for personal gain, and whereas the members of the governing authority feel that all elected officials of the city of Valdosta should conduct themselves so as to not create any question or concern as to the appropriateness, legality, or sincerity of any actions or conduct as a member of the governing authority, and whereas such measures are necessary to provide the public with confidence in the integrity of its government. Therefore, being upon, uh, therefore based upon the City of Valdosta Code of Ethics from Section One, the mayor of Valdosta has violated its own Code of Ethics. As a concerned clergy, we ask that all city officials be held accountable by same Code of Ethics that have been used in times past, when other city employees were suspended for a violation of the moral Code of Ethics. The question is not, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a criminal perspective, but rather, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a moral and civil perspective? The Concerned Clergies of Valdosta ask that the Ethics Committee do not review our complaint from a criminal perspective, because it is not. You must consider the whole Code of Ethics. If the whole Code of Ethics is not used in this complaint, it sends a message that certain parts of the Valdosta Code of Ethics only applies to whomever, whenever it is needed. Thank you for your time, and may God bless you.
Colonel, I have a political comment for the day. Okay, uh, if you want to go to a Trump rally, or go shopping, or go out to eat, or go to a ballgame, you can't, because you could spread the virus. But we'll welcome in tens of thousands of migrants in one big group, unchecked, from disease-ridden nations. Is this correct?
Colonel, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the two hotspots, and they actually call it the hotspots of the globe. It's Arizona and California.
Gee, I wonder why that is?
Well, I'm gonna ask, what do they have in common, large, massive migrant, unchecked migrant populations?
Good day. My name is Dr. Henry R. Williams. I'm the bishop and senior pastor of Word Oasis Church in Valdosta, Georgia. I'm also a member of the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta, Georgia. I come before you to share my concerns about the ethics complaint filed against Mayor Scott James Matheson of Valdosta by several organizations in our community, namely, the NAACP, Mary Turner Organization, the Valdosta Lowns Community Action Group, and the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta. After the meeting on April first, twenty-twenty-one of the Ethics Committee. After the meeting on April first, twenty twenty-one, of the Ethics Committee, it appears that the entire Code of Ethics is not being used in consideration to determine if the mayor has violated the Code of Ethics. The Ethics Committee, who will be reviewing the complaint, was only given the third section of the Code of Ethics that deal with the criminal part of the Code of Ethics. Our complaint has never been a criminal complaint. We have never accused the mayor of any criminal offense. Our charges are based upon the first section of the Code of Ethics, which states as follows: "Whereas the governing authority deems it essential to the proper operation of democratic government that the public officials be and give the appearance of being independent, impartial, and responsible to the people that governmental decisions and policies be made in the proper channels of the governmental structure, and that public office not be used for personal gain. And whereas the members of the governing authority feel that all elected officials of the city of Valdosta should conduct themselves as so to not create any question or concern as to the appropriateness, legality, or sincerity of any actions or conduct as a member of the governing authority. And whereas such measures are necessary to provide the public with confidence in the integrity of its government. Therefore, based upon the City of Valdosta Code of Ethics from Section One, the mayor of Valdosta has violated its own ethics codes. As a concerned clergy, we ask that all city officials be held accountable by the same code of ethics when other city employees were suspended for violation of the moral code of ethics. The question is not, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a criminal perspective, but instead, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a moral and civil perspective? The Concerned Clergy of Valdosta asks that the Ethics Committee do not review our complaint from a criminal perspective because it's not. You must consider the whole Code of Ethics. If the entire Code of Ethics is not used in this complaint, it sends a message that certain parts of the Valdosta Code of Ethics only apply to whomever and whenever it is needed. Thank you, and may God bless you.
And based on my, uh, work in the intelligence community for fourteen years, including the national level, and my training in biochemical warfare, because I was a battalion biochemical warfare officer, this thing was engineered. This was not natural.
Agreed. Agreed.
All right, I'll leave you with that.
Grace and peace, my name is Pastor Bernard Leon Robinson Senior. I'm the Senior Pastor of the Greater Pleasantable Missionary Baptist Church in the beautiful city of Valdosta, Georgia. I'm also a member of the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta, where I serve as the Second Vice President of the Concerned Clergies. I come before you to share my concern as it relates to the ethic complaint that was filed against our mayor, Mayor Scott James Matheson of Valdosta, by several organizations in our community: the NAACP, the Mary Turner Organization, the Valdosta Lowns Community Action Group, and also the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta. After the meeting, which was held on April the first, twenty twenty-one, of the Ethics Committee, it appears that the entire Code of Ethics is not being used in consideration to determine if our mayor has violated the ethic code. The Ethics Committee, who will be reviewing the complaint, was only given a third section of the Code of Ethics that deal with the criminal part of the Code of Ethics. Our complaint has never been a criminal complaint. We have never accused the mayor of any criminal offense. Our charges are based totally upon the first section of the Code of Ethics, which states, "Whereas the governing authority deems it essential to the proper operation of demographic government that the public officials be and be given an appearance of being independent, impartial, and responsible to the people that the government decision and policies be made in the proper channels of governmental structure, and the public office not be used for any personal gain. And whereas the members of the governing authority feel that all elected officials of the city of Valdosta should conduct themselves so as not to create any question or concern as to the appropriate legality and sincerity of any action or conduct as a member of the governing authority, and whereas such measures are necessary to provide the public with confidence in the integrity of its government." Therefore, based upon the City of Valdosta Code of Ethics from Section One, the mayor of Valdosta has violated its own codes of ethics. As a concerned clergy, we ask that all city officials be held accountable by the same code of ethics that have been used in times past when other city officials were suspended for violation of the moral code of ethics. The question is not, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a criminal perspective, but rather, did the mayor violate the Code of Ethics from a moral and civil perspective? The Concerned Clergies of Valdosta, we ask that the Ethics Committee do not review our complaint from a criminal perspective because it's not. You must consider the whole Code of Ethics. If the whole Code of Ethics is not used in this complaint, it sends a message that certain parts of the Valdosta Code of Ethics only apply to whoever, whenever it is needed. Thank you, and may God forever bless you, is my prayer.
No discussion, very little at all, excuse me. Getting the floor and symbolically impeaching him all over again in the House, of course, it'll go nowhere. But, uh, from one discussion midweek last week by some of these, it died, the whole Democrat to th- this craziness that they're now talking about today. The man's out in a matter of, what? Uh, eight days? Am I correct? Yes. Packing his bag, and now every speech sounds just like that, conceit, concession, and, it'll be a peaceful transition, and we'll take him at his word. But to do the, the dog and pony show that they're gonna try and do today, a- a- and I think you know, and if you catch some of the talking heads, Pelosi and the rest of them, they're, they're in a big hurry to do it. I think that's a, a massive mistake, and that's me inside myself saying it, that's me stepping outside myself and saying it. Wrong. Wrong, and, and wrong again. At about fifty fronts. If you can't see that, then you're not, uh, you're not that big person that can. And, and then, and then, uh, another bunch of preachers condemn it again. I expect forgiveness from that first and foremost, so let's go. Let's move on. Put the blinders on, look forward. Look forward to what you think the country will look like, and you're not, not whatever they're about to, to do. I don't get it.
Good afternoon, grace and peace, um, to each of you. Uh, again, this is a day that the Lord has made, I choose to rejoice, uh, and be glad in it. Uh, my name is Bishop Wade Starling McCray. I'm the Senior Pastor of Union Cathedral and the Establishmentarian of Raymond Covenant Fellowship of Passors right here in Valdosta, Georgia. I'm also a member of the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta. And, uh, I come before you to share my concerns as it relates to the ethics complaint that was filed against uh, Mayor Scott James Matheson of Valdosta by several organizations in our community, uh, namely, the NAACP, the Mary Turner Organization, the Valdosta Lowns County Action Group, as well as the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta. Um, after the meeting on April first, twenty twenty-one, the Ethics Committee, uh, it appears that the entire Code of Ethics, uh, is not being used to, uh, in consideration to determine if the mayor has violated, uh, ethics codes. Uh, the Ethic- Ethics Committee, who, uh, will be reviewing the complaint, was only given the third section of the code that deals with the criminal part of the Code of Ethics. Our complaint, uh, has never been a criminal complaint. Uh, we've never accused, uh, the mayor of any criminal, uh, offense. However, our charges are based upon the first section of the Code of Ethics, which states this: "Whereas the governing authority deems it essential to the proper operation of democratic government that the public officials be and give the appearance of being independent, impartial, and reasonable, uh, to the people that governmental decisions and policies be made in the proper channels of the governmental structure, and that public office not be used for personal gain. Whereas, uh, the members of the governing authority feel that all elected officials of the city of Valdosta should conduct themselves so as to not create any question or concern as to appropriateness, legality, or sincerity of any actions or conduct as a member of the governing authority, and whereas such measures and necessi- uh, necessary to provide the public with, um, confidence in the integrity of its government. Therefore, ladies and gentlemen, based on the City of Valdosta's Code of Ethics from Section One, the mayor of Valdosta has violated its own codes of ethics. As a concerned clergy, um, uh, we ask that all of our city officials be held accountable to the same code of ethics that have been used in times past when other city employees were suspended, uh, for a violation of the moral code of ethics. The question is not, did the mayor violate code of ethics from a criminal perspective, but rather, did the mayor violate code, the code of ethics from a moral and civil perspective? Uh, the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta ask that the Ethics Committee do not review our complaint from a criminal perspective because it's not. Um, you must consider the whole Code of Ethics. If the whole Code of Ethics is not used in this complaint, it sends a message that certain parts of the city Code of Ethics only apply to whomever, whenever it is needed. Uh, with those things being said, um, as Bishop of the city, uh, I support my brothers, uh, that are members of the Concerned Clergies of Valdosta, um, and I support our efforts, um, and what we're doing at this hour. Bless you heavenly, upon you, is our prayer. And we trust that God to move we've done in this, uh, scenario and situation. God bless.
And so-
That is why the Democrat Party doesn't have any quality people. They do not, they do not have one quality person in the Democratic Party. They're all either trolls or, uh, scumbags like this Assad character. He is, he is, he is horrible. I don't know how he got elected.
So, so not true. There's, not true. The ones that seem to lead or be the most visible are the most bizarre, absolutely. But there are some solid people standing over there. I, I don't know why they stand up.
They're not in leadership positions.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Wha- what I was saying, uh, before we got, uh, the spring throws is I've calmed down a lot now, but I was very, 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 very upset at the mayor because of his comments about canvassing. Um, that was a his- a historical moment. Um, and the college students that I had with me, uh, were very aware. I made sure I sat them down to give them the input of why it was necessary for us to do what we're doing. And I had students from all walks of life. I was so proud of them because they were adamant about doing what they did. Two of my daughters were there, um-
You guys basically went out on vans and were getting people to the polls.
We, and we actually did it for eight hours a day. So it wasn't just a couple of hours, we actually went out eight hours a day, and they gave up a lot of time, uh, they made a lot of money. Um, and their sole purpose was to go door to door. There were thirty thousand registered Democrats that had never voted. And so we targeted that voter base. Well, guess what? The Republican Party did the same thing. They targeted their Republican voter base. Nothing that we did was any different than they did. How the mayor was able to stand before an audience and people and say that we paid, where he got this figure from, I don't know. We paid seventy-five dollars to a person to vote. And then he, he takes the story and gives it some wings and says that he went out and brought five more people back, and they got paid seventy-five dollars to vote. And he said he saw a man that had sixty-five, seventy-five dollar check turned face down on a table. What did he see to the effect? What, and what planet did that occur on? Where, who did that? Because I know all the different groups that were, uh, canvassing, but the week in which he's speaking of, there were only two groups out there, and that was myself and Omega Calhoun, uh, that were out canvassing. And neither of our groups did any of what he stated. So we're very, you know, we're, 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 we're just, you know, when I talked to, uh, Brother Calhoun on the phone, he was upset. And, um, you know, and the mayor has placed him in, placed himself in a position where he could actually sue, you know, for those type of comments, you know, they, they were, they were outlandish. Those were criminal comments, as, as a matter of fact.
Well, he suggested, right, that people were bordering on criminal activity.
Yes.
He literally says that nobody looks into it, it's such a gray area that they don't even prosecute, and all this kind of thing.
So if anybody that he should be speaking to, he should make every effort to sit down and speak with me to, you know, maybe clear this thing up a little bit. If it was still the way around, he'd want it done. You know, I've tried to contact him about retracting the statement, ended up basically he was lined up with him, with Antonio Smith, and he's refused to get back with me, so-
Yeah, can I ask a question about it? And this, it probably, I don't, and you don't wanna answer, that's fine, because I don't put you on the spot. But to me, like, all of that is a manifestation of white superiority.
Yes, it is. Without a doubt, it is.
Okay, this one, you know what I'm saying? Because when, when most white folks think of white superiority, white supremacy, right? It's about the Klan, or the, now the Boogaloo Boys, or the Proud Boys. But I think this is a really, I, can we, and we just sit with this spot for just a second? Like, to me, this is how it works in everyday institutions with- Like, to me, this is how it works in everyday institutions with upstanding church-going white folks. Does that make sense? And do you think that's a fair critique?
I think it's a very fair critique, because I believe that he feels that I'm beneath him and he doesn't have to answer to me. I, I pose no threat to him. Certainly, he feels that, that I can't increase his income in any way possible. And, you know, I, I even have to go as far as to say that the way he's dealt with the entire situation speaks highly of, of his character in a very negative way. I believe that, that, you know, when he, when, you know, when you look at the situation and the way he's laid it out, it kind of spells out the fact that, that he feels superior in some way. A very smug, a very smug individual. And he's very confident nothing's going to happen to him.
Yeah, and, and, you know, because I take the position, those of us who've been kind of raised, socialized as white, myself included at times, right? We've kind of got this disease of we know better, right? Or we don't have to answer to, or we don't, or, or we simply don't know how, we don't have to know about other people. You know, even if we're in charge of providing services or representing them as an elected official, you know, so it, it, to me, because I've manifested, I manifested male, you know, superiority in relation to women at times. And so I don't want to sound like I'm beaten up on him, because I think at times it's conscious in us and sometimes it's just unconscious. But I guess for me, when people are looking for examples of systematic white male supremacy in this case, right? This is such a really good example of how it works.
The, the fact is that that happens in every election. Now, they don't go by the number of dead people who voted. They go by did this way the election left or right? Did it do one way or the other?
They walk away from what was an obvious fraud.
That's why whenever you hear a news report, they say there's no evidence of not, they don't say there's no evidence of election fraud. They say there's no evidence of widespread, that's the word, that's the key word, widespread election fraud, which actually, actually it is.
And, and to both of you, that was only, the only prosecution of any fraud whatsoever has been out of Texas. Am I correct, that one lady? Who, yeah. Got a slap on the wrist. Hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of ballots.
And she'll get a slap on the wrist and a reduced sentence at some point.
Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Ronnie Mathis. I am the senior pastor of the Cross and Jordan Baptist Church here in the city of Valdosta, Georgia. I am also a proud member of the Concerned Clerages of Valdosta, Georgia. I come before you today to share my concerns as it relates to the ethic complaint that was filed against Mayor Scott James Matheson of Valdosta by several organizations in our community. Those organizations are the NAACP, the Mary Turner Organization, the Valdosta Nows Action Group, and the Concerned Clerages of Valdosta. It was after the meeting on April 1st, 2021 of the Ethics Committee, it appears that the entire code of ethics is not being used in consideration to determine if the mayor has violated the code of ethics. The Ethics Committee, who will be reviewing the complaint, was only given the third section of the Code of Ethics that deals with the criminal part of the Code of Ethics. Our complaint has never been a criminal complaint. We've never accused the mayor of any criminal offense. Our charges are based upon the first section of the Code of Ethics, which states, I quote, "Whereas the governing authority deemed it essential to the proper operation of democratic government that the public officials be and give the appearance of being independent, impartial, and responsible to the people, that government decisions and policies be made in the proper channels of the governmental structure, and that public office not be used for personal gain. And whereas, the members of the governing authority feel that all elected officials of the city of Valdosta should conduct themselves so as to not create any questions or concerns as to the appropriateness, legality, or sincerity of any actions or conduct as a member of the governing authority. And whereas, such measures are necessary to provide the public with confidence and the integrity of its government. Therefore, based upon the city of Valdosta Code of Ethics, from section one, the mayor of Valdosta has violated his own code of ethics. As a concerned clergy, we ask that all city officials be held accountable by the same code of ethics that have been used in time past when other city employees were suspended for a violation of moral code of ethics. The question is not, did the mayor violate the code of ethics from a criminal perspective? But rather, did the mayor violate the code of ethics from a moral and civil perspective? The Concerned Clerages of Valdosta ask the Ethics Committee, do not review our complaint from a criminal perspective, because it's not. You must, and I repeat, you must, consider the whole code of ethics. If the whole code of ethics is not used in this complaint, it sends a message that certain parts of the Valdosta Code of Ethics only applies to whomever, whenever, is needed. Thank you, and may God bless you.
What's really even worse about it is the judges. Judges do not want, they do not want these cases coming before them. That's why it didn't go to the Supreme Court. That's why it keeps getting thrown out. They said, oh, we don't, they don't even want to look at the evidence. And that's, that's what's sad about it. They don't want to look at the evidence and go, no, no, I don't, I don't even want to start on there. We're not going to go there.
Yep, because we had this thing, thing in Brooks County in 2010 when they had the voter fraud.
Yeah, I remember when that happened.
Judges kept throwing it out, or they actually kept, or they missed, missed trials.
They called this trial a recusing themselves. So what, what they do, they recuse themselves, they have to get another judge. Oh, I don't want to look at this game. That's basically what they're saying is I don't want to be involved in this case. Why? I don't know.
Make the whole election dubious, you know, and you throw in the machines too. Anyhow, that was something that's been bothering me, you know, I'm just, somebody needs to be like, tell them or maybe find that judge with Calhoun is, put some people in jail for it.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Hello, Facebook family. I'm just reeling in from a tumultuous morning. As you will see from the news clips from earlier today at the City Hall Ethics Complaint Hearing, I'm along with so many other Concerned Clergy and other groups that met this morning are disillusioned by the decision of the Ethics Committee to dismiss our complaint against the mayor, Scott Matheson, and his behavior and his egregious words that he reverberated repeatedly on his morning radio program, which is a radio station that he personally owns. He uses this platform as his, a political platform. As the mayor, he speaks as the mayor of Valdosta on his show. And his co-hosts, along with he, have said things that have really caused concern and that really caused us to want to call him into question concerning his behavior from a moral perspective, not criminal. And as you see from the news clips that you see on my page, he says that he has spoken or will speak to everyone. Well, he refused to speak to us. We, as a group, approached him. We had individual members of our, our organization to call him, to have a conversation before the complaint was even filed. And he refused to have a conversation with us. Therefore, it left us no other alternative but to file a formal ethics complaint. And that's all it was. And that's all it ever has been. It has never been from a criminal perspective, which the Ethics Committee, as you seen again from the news clip, was actually weighing in on our complaint from that angle of the Ethics Code. And they forfeited, as you saw Dr. Mark George present our evidence that we based our claim upon, which they had none of that in their possession. It's as though they just totally just took all of that out of the Ethics Code. And they did not weigh in on a moral charge against the mayor. Therefore, from a legal perspective, which two of the committee members are attorneys, and they weighed in from that, from a legal perspective. They as well had their attorney, the city attorney there. Our attorney, we did retain an attorney out of Atlanta, but she had court today, so she could not attend. She forwarded a letter to ask for a continuance of this Ethics Complaint Hearing today and to postpone it for ten days so that she could familiarize herself with the case. But they, earlier this morning, decided not to do so. And of course, as you have heard, they have made the decision to dismiss our complaint against the mayor. I spoke earlier with some of the organization members and also we were texting our emotions and feelings about today's hearing, which I don't know why they called it a, a public hearing, because they didn't even hear the public. They allowed no one to say anything at all, period. When they walked in the room, they had already made their decision. They did not actually weigh the evidence. They didn't even allow any to be presented. They made a decision. And I won't go any further of how they arrived at that decision. But just look at the video and then you, you'll figure out and be able to put the pieces together. But this behavior has to stop. I've been a resident of Nows County, Valdosta, for well over thirty years. And a change has to come. Enough is enough. And I think that it's time for us to stand up as a people. And we need to voice our feelings, our opinion. And we do that not by rioting, not by going into the streets to wreak havoc, to exhaust our frustration. We do that from a legal perspective and then also legally vote. We do that by voting. Valdosta, wake up. Here we are, fifty-one percent of the population of the inner-city part of Valdosta. That means we're the majority. Wake up and vote. The majority is not just in the Atlanta metroplex. Valdosta, you are a sleeping giant and you need to wake up. Change is not going to happen by itself. You have to make change happen. And that happens when you get involved. Not stepping back to the sidelines and say things are just going to be the way they're going to be. If you have that kind of attitude and feeling, then it is. And it's not going to change. And things will not benefit you. You're going to still sit by the wayside, not having enough. You're going to still be frustrated because our community is below the poverty line across the country. We are ranked number ten in the country as below the poverty line. And that ought to concern you. So it's time to wake up. When the ballot boxes open to vote, even though they passed a ridiculous new voting laws in our state to try to make it harder to vote, with some have called it the third wave of Reconstruction, it may be. But they want to make it hard for us to vote. When elections come again, and they are coming soon, I want you to get up and exercise your right to vote. Speak at the ballot box. Vote. Let's vote the right people in office that care about the people and for the people. That's what I expect to see happen. That's what we're going to promote. That's what we are going to push. So today's decision, I wasn't, I wasn't surprised. I was in stammer. I said to someone that, that they say, some people say that the system is broken. And I repeated that the system's not broken. The system is working exactly the way it's designed. Did you hear me? The system is working exactly the way it's been designed. And that's where we come in, people. We can make a difference. Change has to come. And I want to see it happen in my lifetime. So let's roll up our sleeves, let's get to work, and let's prepare to make change happen. I encourage you, I implore you to be involved in making change happen. God bless. I've stayed on much longer than I intended to. I'm going to finish unwinding for the day. As you can see, I'm still in my attire that I had on earlier this morning, all day long. Have a blessed evening. And, and again, as the news reporters say, if you want to hear more of why we filed our complaint, that footage and that information is on their website. I encourage you, if you've not heard the recordings of Mayor Matheson's and his remarks, his egregious remarks on his radio show, go take a listen. And you'll find out why we need to make change. God bless, we'll talk to you soon.
I just want to say to Attorney Tanner, thank you, sir, for answering my questions. So that the public can hear it. I don't have no hard feelings. I just wanted to. I just wanted your legal advice on, on this.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
All right, let's move it along. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of amendments from our April eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting. We've all had an opportunity to review those. Are there any corrections or changes? If not, they will be approved by our confirmation. All right, next item, Agenda Item Four, ordinances and resolutions. And first, have a consideration for a request to lift the moratorium on the issues of licenses for retail package stores. Senior Attorney, City Attorney.
Hi.
City Mayor, Chairman Mark Barbour, please.
Thank you, Mayor Barbour. As you recall, uh, back in October of twenty nineteen, uh, City Mayor Council voted to place a moratorium on new retail package stores opening up in our community. We just want to take a step back during this moratorium and look at, at the proximity of these, of these organizations and determine if we, if our ordinance is suited for continued growth of those type of organizations and businesses in our community. Uh, we did that. Uh, we compared ourselves to other places and, uh, and we'll talk about that in the next agenda item. But first, we have to lift, I need your approval to lift the moratorium so then we can discuss the second item. Uh, because if we don't lift the moratorium, there'll be no need to discuss, uh, the, the next agenda item. So this is just simply a vote to lift the moratorium and be placed on October tenth, twenty nineteen. If you have any further questions.
Any questions? If not, can I get a motion from counsel?
Someone said.
Give a second. We have a motion in a second to approve the request that's presented. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Two hands. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, it's a consideration of amendment to the City of Allosa Alcohol Orders, Chapter Six. Alcohol beverages are two licenses, section six dash thirty-seven. Location of alcoholic beverage business, second reading. Mr. Mark Barbour, please.
Thank you. Uh, as I just stated, this, this resulted from the moratorium and our staff looking at the different, uh, ideas that, uh, that, that we can, uh, put into our ordinance to kind of achieve some of the goals that we were looking at, uh, with these type of businesses in our community. Also, I felt that at the same time, we did the, uh, retail package store moratorium, we also did the baking store, uh, moratorium where, uh, additional baking stores can now level in our community. And at the summit, we decided to let the, uh, the moratorium on the baking store remain as it is until we can do additional research. So at this point in time, uh, we talked about this at the summit. Uh, currently, the way, uh, the language reads in our current ordinance is that a retail package store has to be three hundred feet from a church, six hundred feet from a school. And we have nothing in the ordinance that pertains to the proximity of retail package store, retail package store. So we looked at other communities outside university cities, things of that nature that we always kind of, our sister communities that we compare ourselves to. And so our, our suggestion, and we talked about that, that retreat, here's the map up here that shows the different locations in red that are, where these, uh, retail package stores are located within the city limits. As, as you remember, we're talking retreat, the yellow are just right outside the city limits, but actually the incorporated area, but they order the, uh, the city limits. So I put this thirteen. So here's what I was just talking about here on this chart. I know it's probably difficult to read. But what, after we looked at, uh, the different cities, our recommendation, the proposal that's in this that we talked about, about First Ring as well as the summit, is to take the distance from three hundred feet from a church to six hundred feet. The six hundred feet from a school remain as it is now. And then we added to the ordinance on the proximity of these, uh, businesses that there'd be fifteen hundred feet between, uh, the businesses. So that would be somewhat brand new to the ordinance that we introduced. We feel this will, as we talked about at the summit, we do feel this will accomplish a lot of what, uh, there were some concerns in Mayor Council. If you have any questions? Yes, counsel, I'm, I'm.
Mark, I, I, I think what, I understand, I, I appreciate the effort. I really do. But the reason why I was talking about this before is I just think we have too many in the city limits of Valdosta. So, um, and I, I understand that the mileage, I mean, the, the distance, it will help. I think what we, if, if, if it's legal, can we put something on there that if someone wants to open one, it needs to come before Mayor Council because of the location? Because what we have in our community now is we have a lot of, um, behavior health people throughout our community in different apartments, complexes, because they're very ready. And we don't want those things right next to them. And we just have too many in the city limits. If you look at them, look at those dots.
It's thirteen.
It's thirteen. But they're, they're real close. I mean, it's not like.
Well, the map makes it a little closer to it. It's, it's.
I, I just speak, I just speak for district four.
Right, right. Yeah.
There's, there's about three or four in walking.
And that's why it was, I pointed out, just on the outskirts of the yellow dots, that adds to it because that's right there.
Exactly. So my, my only thing is, I, I knew, I know we was talking about, it may be a legal issue. We say, we can't, we can't, we can limit how many we have. But if we lift the moratorium, which, you know, we just voted to do, we could get a legal challenge to say that the ordinance that we get ready to pass could get, could get a legal challenge if you decrease the footage.
I would change that in the past. That, that would be, that is what, if you guys decide to approve of what's been presented, that's in the ordinance now. You know, one thing to talk about with retreat councilmen regarding that is that, uh, years past, uh, council did give up the authority to approve every store that came in or an alcohol license period. Anybody who just wanted an alcohol license came for. And that, that was granted to the city manager at that point in time. But as we discussed at the retreat, you know, I, 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 I'm in agreement in exactly what you're saying. So I think there's ways to work around it. I think this solves some of your concern. But as I said, I will, what I think we're going to do in the future, especially if it pertains to your district. We'll make that decision together and, and look at it at that point. Uh, so, but again, that's up to you guys. If you want to amend the ordinance to, to, to put that back on you guys, uh, that's fine, but I don't.
No, no, no. I, I, my, my concern, I just think, when I say it comes before Mayor Council because you know, we, we all have a location map on where certain areas are. And I just don't want to take a chance on something being in close to one of those behavior health places.
I'm with it.
And, and, and alcohol gets into existence.
I remember I heard back the example I used. District three, Councilman Vickers had an issue at a convenience store. Um, it was outside our current parameters that we have in our current ordinance. There was a rumor that it would be a, a retail package store. I felt absolutely, even though it was outside and it met our current ordinance, was still close to the school there. So that would have been denied. And I would, and Councilman Vickers and I spoke about that and made that decision. So I hear what you're saying, but I think we can do that through this. So with the, if this new, uh, proposed ordinance, that wouldn't have been a consideration. It would have been denied to begin with it because it didn't meet the footage requirements. So that's why I think this additional footage will help exactly with that. Uh, but on the same page with you, so I think we can handle that. Any other questions?
There are some provisions under the state alcohol law that prevents the issuance of alcohol licenses are closed to facilities like the Jefferson. I get that information to you, that's what I'm saying. And that's, that's what the state issues.
That's the state, right. And if they, if we don't have the state, they just go with us. So that, all that can be worked out.
I don't have any, sir, because that's like at the retreat you talked about, we had the authority to make sure you and the councilmen that are concerned with this.
All right then. If there's nothing else, can I get a motion by counsel?
Nobody talks, someone.
Do you have a second?
I have seventy.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the request, please raise your hand. Those opposed? For what? Thank you. All right, uh, next item up is consideration of amendment to the City of Allosa's alcohol ordinance. Uh, this is pertaining to the consumption of alcohol premise in our downtown entertainment district. Allegio Main Street Director, extraordinary one percent.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Barbour and Council. Um, as you know, this is the second reading of this ordinance and this was an action I had at the summit. Um, so what this, uh, amendment to the ordinance pertains to is creating an entertainment district for downtown. Um, that will include the Central Allosa Development Authority District. And then it will continue up to, uh, the property of the Turner Center for the Arts. It will include the brewery property to our west and also the new amphitheater space. Um, so what this is, is just, um, for all of the, all the businesses that are in our downtown, which will be the entertainment district that has a, a pouring license for alcohol. Um, they can then pour those drinks to go. Um, one drink per person. Um, you can only use them, uh, in our entertainment district. Um, businesses have the right to refuse, um, drinks in their own businesses. Of course, you know, going into the parking lots and getting a car and taking this with you. And we will have the, the cups, which we already have in our office, ready to go, uh, with a printed logo on them so that people know that these are the cups that you can use to walk around with your container in just the entertainment district. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Certainly is something to do with hearing a lot of logic comments about, right now, general businesses. Uh, happy to see this go through the process and, uh, it's now time for a vote for you, ma'am.
I just have one question. If we approve this, this starts with me?
My assumption is tomorrow.
Are you prepared to vote for a motion?
I'm going to just pick on code today. I, I make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
We have a motion in a second to approve the request for further discussion. If not, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. You have a second. Thank you. All right, moving along. Uh, five local funding requests, consideration of a request to approve fees for the preparation of these right of way to last year's neighborhood. Uh, Senior Attorney, Detective, Detective, Detective.
Good evening. Um, as you, uh, may recall, last year, uh, last summer, um, we talked about making improvements over the Dogwood Circle area. Um, it's a place with, you know, narrow rightways that dirt roads, deep digits, um, and quality of light really isn't all that great in the neighborhood because of, of the conditions here with the infrastructure. If you recall, we, we, um, annexed that area in two thousand and five. Um, and so we went ahead with the design. And the real reason that we're here tonight is mainly for transparency purposes. Um, and the original, uh, contract came in forty-nine-five, forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And it was just for the design. Of course, at the time, we didn't know a lot of things because we hadn't surveyed and designed it. So, um, uh, the city manager, central operations, he just started. We went ahead and he used his authority to go ahead and approve the contract because it was under fifty thousand. Well, since that time, we've done some additional work and we started looking at things. And we're going to have to do some, some existing. We're going to have to acquire some right of way over there. It's very similar to the neighborhood where we annexed before. Do you remember over in Lindsay and Stokes and Savannah where everything was kind of out of place? Well, that's what we've got over here. So, um, we authorized them to, to, to go ahead and, um, look at the right of way. The initial cost came in at thirty-nine thousand three, uh, nine hundred dollars to, to do all the legal work and survey work. Uh, we were able to value engineer down to twenty-two-eight. If you take the twenty-two-eight and forty-nine-five, that puts the total project down at seventy-three.
Seventy-two.
Yeah, seventy-two-three. And so consequently, tonight, we're asking, since that exceeds the fifty thousand that, uh, if you approve the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars fee in a day engineering. And again, it's, uh, the total fee then will be seventy-two thousand three hundred dollars. Any other questions that you want to have?
Superior project, it's going to be ready to see it. They completed.
So are we making a motion for the seventy-two thousand or the twenty-two?
For the twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
I make a motion, sir, we approve the twenty-two thousand eight hundred for this budget.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the request that's presented for any discussion. If not, can I get a, a right hand with all those in favor of the motion? Yes, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is now the time for the citizens to be heard. Um, those that are here, to whom our citizens to be heard in this portion, we ask that you come forward, state your name and address that you made. Count that for the record. Uh, our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others can have time to hear. We do ask that you please do write off comments to the council as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members of the council in debate. It is the council's policy to follow through with any other concerns. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council, list a one spokesperson to represent the group in their comments. Again, this will ensure that others have time to hear. Having said that, is there anyone, any citizen here to hear?
Yeah, it's from the John Roberts of Lake Park. Fair against, um, San Juan Church of Lake Park. Right here in this field, my rights are violated when freedom of speech. I slid back there and I raised my hand and I asked for just a public meeting when you made the decision about, about the mayor. I was getting older. I was reminded of a portion of a period in my life where I represented eight hundred and fifty people and civil education out in South Florida. I feel that I've been re-injured by going back through the present memories based upon the past of this type stuff that we can share even to this day. I heard the voices in this room tonight about the controversy of the decision being made from a legal aspect, from a conservative citizen aspect. I'm tired of being excluded and witnessing people being excluded. This is preposterous, what's going on here in this city. It's a shame for man and God what we have to continue with from day to day from this type of government. These decisions is out of norm. When the board and the panel that represents all the people can't have an opinion when somebody is forced upon me, I'm forced upon me on today, this day, on a decision being read on the structure of, of escalons of power in this place. I'm hurt to the core of my heart because my life was torn to rip apart down in South Florida. My family lost everything. I was placed under federal protection by the Federal Church Movement down in Miami. That was based upon decisions from people like this. And I feel that I've been totally re-injured from the present memories of what I see here today and what I experience here in this place. I was born here on Stafford Road. And it's a shame that I come back here and try in this place in the shape that it's in. I feel like I'm not grateful here for the way we're treated. This is, this is outrageous for what is happening in this place. And to go along with it, to try to justify it, it don't make any sense at all. You can't justify wrong. You can only justify the thing that is done right and outside of man and then outside of God. I feel that my rights have been violated.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
You're not welcome.
Is anyone else wishing to be heard? Anyone else? I'm bored. State your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mark Patrick George. I'm with twenty-two thirty for our court. I'm the coordinator of Mary Turner Project. I just want to thank you for taking our complaint seriously. I appreciate the questions you asked. You inherited an ordinance that's ineffective. I just want to draw attention to the fact that it was an unethical, ethical analysis. Uh, and just remind you of a few things. And again, thank you for what you said earlier. And I hope when you revisit the ordinance because I, I read that ordinance different than the attorney does. I think you can't put this on the agenda. I think you can take action. It doesn't say what action you have to take. Um, first and foremost, we were told this is the only complaint process for a citizen. I think you can't put this on the agenda, I think you can take action, it doesn't say what action you have to take. First and foremost, we were told this is the only complaint process for a citizen of Valdosta. We got the Code of Ethics from Mr. Barber, we filled it out. We started the process, then the mayor got to choose his person for the ethics committee. We, we asked Mr. Tuneson, and I was hoping he would say whether or not they had been in communication during this process, because we weren't allowed to ask the ethical commit, ethics committee one single question at any point in time in this process. Mr. Tuneson didn't answer that question in the public hearing, it was for the public. We think that they were, I had a conversation the night he was chosen, and I think Mr. Tuneson should have accused himself. We were given less than twenty-four hours' notice for the public hearing for the planning session. Then we had to ask for a directive about the fourteenth, the April fourteenth meeting. We didn't know until four days, or actually three and a half business days before that meeting, that we could have a legal counsel. And then we were suspended for quote-unquote waiting to the eleven hour, when we didn't know it. And then when we came to that meeting, they immediately adjourned it to executive session. This is not your fault, this is the existing ordinance, I understand that. We're hoping that you'll revisit it. We also know that employees have been held to the preamble and punished based upon the Code of Ethics that, that Mr. Sheldon, Mr. Tuneson didn't see was relevant. And that's about it. I was hoping the mayor was here, because this was the day after this hearing, this sort of place.
Please want to even out the text, otherwise I appreciate it all, but I'd be sitting here by myself, couldn't take anybody, a lot of us people shut up. Be afraid of the stress that held my hands, including this guy, you have to sit through something. Even the group spokesperson had to back off at the eleven hour, said, he never said he did anything ethically wrong. We think it, it was the spirit that they were playing, I wanted to listen, but that's, that's a, my dog, Charlie, for fifty days, just created that, I did something absolutely wrong, they absolutely know it, they're sitting on local lines as I sit and talk here every day.
I'll just stop up there, because we never said that. We said what he has done is better than the election.
Thank you, Mr. George.
So I hope we revisit the ordinance, and I hope you'll consider putting back on the agenda to take an action, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would speak? Who else? Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Dr. Melanie Calhoun, and I reside at fifty-two oh one Grayfield Circle. I came to make one statement, I'm not gonna go into any dissection, but at the end of the day, you six people that sit here before us, plus the, the mayor of Valdosta, are accountable to the people that voted in office. And you need to remember that, that everything you do, whether you are here in this building or whether you are outside of this building, you were voted in for a reason and for a purpose to represent the will of the people, of the citizens of Valdosta. And it is a shame when this body cannot and will not stand up for what is right and represent the will of the people of Valdosta.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
My name is George Foster Ryan, I wanna thank y'all as elected officials for serving the people, because I want to serve the people. Last night, I was at the school board, City School Board of Education. And I made a statement, the superintendent failed to comply with the Open Records Act, and he did not ever respond to it, and I saw it stated last night. He never sent me a copy of the EEOC complaint, uh, response to determine there was no discrimination in the board, elected seats, about the court. And I just can't get together why Valdosta seemed to be in a, see by itself, got their own several halls, I can't understand it. You all been waiting for officials, I've been coming for six years, till you all about respecting our military veterans by placing this place a flag on city buildings. I can't understand why y'all ain't doing it. We home to move out for a place. I don't give nobody in the city state a compliment, I'm gonna continue. And lastly, city council members, as Valdosta have a long record, there are many of you sitting on this board, I know you're sitting there, and I know you know what I mean, that this city is filled with racism. And we know that there is a good old boy system here, we know that. That's why the family did not get justice in the death of Willie James Williams case. I'm under an eight-year-old criminal trespass, and I violated no law. The sheriff department didn't think enough of the law to put in Ryan, undersheriff Ryan, and they refused to remove me and Ryan. They sent me a letter stating, we don't have nothing in our records. That's not good enough, because I had it on audio tape, because I had a tape recorder when the sheriff department said, you will be arrested if you go on Wisconsin High School. And Wes Taylor did it. Wes, Wes Taylor, Wes Taylor said, he didn't do it. The sheriff department didn't do it. None of the Supreme Court, the court judges, all of that, the federal court didn't do it. And I'm still under, because they won't remove me and Ryan. And until they remove me and Ryan, George Foster Ryan gonna stay on the case as I started studying the military for twenty years, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. George.
We keep getting too far away.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please go forward, state your name and address.
Kathryn Grant, five two three seven, Grayfield Circle. I have a question that is a point of order. How are the agendas approved? And when are they approved?
The agendas are set by the city manager.
And when are they approved?
They're, when they're wrapped up on the flag, we're at the meeting of the council.
Is there a vote taken on the, on the agendas to approve? There is not. Is that not council, uh, a problem? No? Agendas don't have to be voted on, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else? If not, we'll close out the citizens to be heard portion and move to the city manager to be called to my brother.
Thank you, Mayor, for attending. Uh, let's see, got just a few items that I want to remind you of. Uh, the first, I think we'll start out with the last, it's the most exciting. Uh, the, as you remember, the spring electronics recycling event was done on April tenth, it was a real big success, and this is one, the first time we've held it at our Public Works facility in the United Amphasatory. We collected four thousand, three or six, seven pounds of TVs and computers and things like that, but overall, we collected like another fifteen thousand pounds of old electronics and then kept that for going into our landfill, so that was a great event. And we gave a regular show of our Public Works complex, and a lot of folks didn't know what that was, and now they'll, they'll know that's out on Laurel Street. During the week of April twelfth to the sixteenth, the Highlands neighborhood, the neighborhood cleanup, and they collected around fourteen tires and four point three seven pounds of debris. So quite a great cleanup with the folks in the Highlands area and district. I want to remind everybody that the Popper Lifetime Concert Series is back. The Main Street Office will host a Brownback Lounge Concert Series downtown, it will start on Monday, the third, and last week, Friday, the seventh. As you know, that's on the Lounge County, courthouse lawn, it's always a great fun for everybody. The time of the day will be eleven-thirty to one-thirty, Monday through Friday, as I said. You can bring your own lunch, do what you want, but there will be some, some lunch there that you can purchase if you want to do that as well. So that's always a fun time, good weather, hopefully a little about the court issue. The City of Valdosta will host a local community hotspot cleanup in District Three on Saturday, May first. On that Saturday, May first, six staff volunteers will be working from nine to twelve P.M. In the neighborhoods between, from River Street to Gordon Street and North Oak Street to Lamar Street. So that will be our area, our quadrant that we work in. But as also be recalled, we were doing things that are a little different, we're just not showing up that Saturday for four hours and cleaning those areas. We'll be doing that all week, hangers should be on some, the, the citizens doors saying, we'll be through your area, all week, put your stuff out, we'll come by, pick it up for your charge, and help folks where we can with that, so. This new method that Mr. Hardy's instituted is really, really popular, and it's really helping, we're seeing a lot of impact in the neighborhoods we're trying to clean. Also, in front of your desks tonight is, if you remember last meeting, Mr. Larry Randolph came to speak to us about a safety of a tree. We did make contact with Mr. Randolph, and we are handling this situation, I think hopefully we'll get to a resolution that the hall, the park owner beside her and Mr. Randolph will be happy with, so we did address that issue on last meeting. Last, and most exciting, is, mind everybody, the twenty-seventh is our October end kickoff, and we're ready out tonight, get them off, go out the back door, and our vehicles are here, they really look good. Really excited about it, they delivered this afternoon, right before we came up here for council meeting, so everything is following in place. But also, if you haven't responded to our email about who can be in attendance at the grand opening, the big celebration we're having on the twenty-seventh, please let us know, because we want to do something a little special when we get, really, we get head counts for that. Again, that's gonna be at ten, tonight, you know, on April twenty-seventh, across from MLK Park, it'll be a great backdrop there, in that area, so please let us know if you plan to be there, because we've got some special plan for you. So with that, I think I'm done for the seat. I have any, any questions?
That is a strong fit, I like that.
Yeah, I wanted to say just last.
All right, then, thank you. Next time, it's the council comments, open the floor, for any ones of council members who speak.
It's me again, um, G of A, did a virtual class Tuesday, and for the state of Georgia, fully vaccinated at this time is eighty-five million people, and that's a twenty-five percent population. And sixty-five years old, we've done thirty-five million. So that's a sixty-five positive improvement for seniors. In African-American family in the state of Georgia, we're at thirteen percent. So that means that African-Americans in the state of Georgia, we need to get out and promote the need to take the vaccine. I'm gonna ask Mr. Barber, Pro Tim, and our council, we got to come up with some kind of solution that we can promote African-Americans really understanding what is up taking these vaccine shots, because we are only thirteen percent in the state of Georgia. And I know that's more, we're, our population is higher than that, so that means that we're not getting out and taking the shots. And in our districts, we got to give in our areas and promote taking the shots, so thank you, sir.
Any other members? I do have a couple comments. First of all, I agree with you, Councilwoman, I didn't know that you had promoted that several area churches were sponsoring a vaccine drive, has that been held yet?
That's right, I'll let you know. I don't know how the outcome was, hopefully Ashley can get with those churches and see how it went.
Well, I do know, I recently had last second shot, and when I pulled in from parking lot of the health department, my vehicle was the only vehicle news to say. I was in, the longest period I had to do was that fifteen minute wait. So they're clearly open for business for anyone that wants it, and as I've driven by Southwood Medical Center, there's a number of times where they get out on the streets and signs, trying to get people to come in, and I think we are...
We've swagged up on taking the shots, and I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing I want to talk about is Monday night, of course, we kicked off this New Year's Government One-on-One, the Citizens Government One-on-One. Great class, probably the only disappointment I had was that everybody in there was, I'm thinking, over fifty years old. Not that there's any of our, the people over fifty, I'm in that group, but, but still a big group. We had one person there that was actually coming back and taking this class for the second time. She was in the inaugural class many years ago. But if, as members of councils, if you get an opportunity over the next six weeks to drop in on the class and just say, hey, maybe share a few words, that'd be a good thing to do, we want to continue to support City Government One-on-One. And with that, I would encourage several citizens that are, that are here tonight, those that are not here, that if you've, if you really wanna know what, how the city government operates, there's a lot of new parts, and really wanna get an inside look at every department, I encourage you to sign up for City Government One-on-One. It's a great opportunity to learn something, and it's a well-prefered. All right, and with that, I'm gonna leave you for the...
You're welcome.
Better work something.
I'm very good at coordinating decisions.
You keep sitting down there, I'm gonna chill.
No, I... I, I, I wanted to address the council. I, I think right now, we, we have some decisions that we need to make. I said, I mean, you, you think about what we've been through this past year, throughout the pandemic, you look at our accomplishments as a city, building permits are up, we didn't have to lay any employees off, um, we, we, we had no tax increases, we created jobs throughout this pandemic. These are the things that we should be proud of, and that's why we want the crowds out here, we want them to come and hear our comments. We don't want to always have controversy. So the reason why I say we have work in this, we need to fix this ordinance, we need to fix a lot of things that, these concerns that people have, they're, they're legitimately concerning. I don't want anyone to brush them off, because the things that we said were heard, I mean, you, you heard one example when he was playing, that was, that was said on the radio, and that was, as mad, that's what we gotta, we gotta, when you said, there's something, councilman, we need to think about this, so when we come to our next meeting or our next call meeting, we need to make, make some decisions so we can keep everything settled. Freedom of speech, yes, but freedom of speech does not come with our freedom of consequence. You're welcome to say what you wanna say, but there's consequences behind what you say. So I...
Well, I certainly agree with the councilman, this, this body has the right to take those kind of actions. I certainly agree with you that we need to address some deficiencies within the policy that we've all witnessed and experienced, and it's unfortunate, but it was, it was the one we had to work with this time, and I hope we're working with each member as we before, unless it's... Anyone else? We have a motion to, at a second, to adjourn all the chairs. We're here.
Mr. Barber, you say you have to hear?
That's in the back, when you go down that back porch, back there, back porch. We're not sure it'll be open, our Senate Richard has the key, so we're not sure.
We're not sure it'll be open. Our Senator Richard has the key, so we're not sure.
Uh-huh. Yo, if I had a hundred sheep and one of them got away, I would leave the ninety-nine and go find that one. That's right.